For December the fourteenth is now in section. Let's all stand for the president.
By allegiance, by the United States of America, to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, of injustice for all. Katrina.
Turn over our Father, Lord, we come again saying thank you, God. Thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Continue to cover our residents of our city, Lord God. Continue to cover each and every leader. Lord God also continues to cover every first responder, police, and every doctor, Lord God, as we continue to battle through this pandemic. As we continue to go through this, Lord God, I'm just asking that you will cover every student and every teacher right now. We thank you for everything that you've been doing in this season. In Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Present.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Worple.
Here. Let the record show nine present, one in chambers, eight by Zoom. Mayor, would you like to address the council?
Thanks, Mr. President. Hi, members of the City Council. Adu by Zoom, Council President Torres, good to see you, sir. Thanks for letting me address the council, Councilman Worple. Right now, we're still meeting biweekly with the Coronavirus Task Force, as most everybody in the region knows. Lake County is designated by the governor in a red, which places severe limitations on restaurants and gatherings of all kinds in Lake County. Any gathering of more than 25 people must be approved by the Lake County Health Department. Right now, we had two waivers issued by Lake County Health Department for successful events that we held, the tree lighting ceremony, that had proper social distancing, and also the Christmas parade, which was held successfully last week. Right now, the only other waiver that I'm aware of in regards to the Lake County Health Department is in regards to the Sportsplex, which is still operating, subject to restrictions approved by the Lake County Health Department. Also, we just recently wrapped up negotiations, excuse me, we signed our four-year contract with the Hammond firefighters, but that was good news. Firefighters were in City Hall last week. We ratified those contracts. I'm not sure if they've been presented to the Board of Public Works in safety yet or not. The contracts were approved with 0011 for the next four years percent pay raises. I briefed the council about changes we made to the union contract that'll help the firefighters and the police officers when they retire, and the body felt that it was important enough to get 0011 over the next four years. With these changes we made, they felt that the changes were more important than the pay raises. City employees did get a 2% pay raise this year. We approved that during our budget. Right now, in regards to litigation with our customer communities, in regards to the water rate increase that was passed by the Hammond Council, all of our customer communities have submitted, remonstrated against the rate increase, which was expected. We are, we have asked our customers in the customer communities, which is Whiting, Highland, Dyer, Griffith, Munster, we've asked them as a class for a counterproposal to our rate increase. We haven't received it. It's been a month, which leads me to believe that our customer communities aren't interested in negotiating, basically, out of this, which is what we feared. So, right now, we're ready to go to court. I know that there's a hearing set during the holidays, and we intend to keep that hearing date. Our legal team is ramping up as we speak. I'm actually supposed to be on family vacation. I am actually making arrangements to fly back in the middle of my vacation so that I could testify in this case. I think, at this point, it's literally going to be on the 27th or the 28th, the 28th. So, it's right after Christmas, right in the middle of the holidays. This is not unexpected. We expected this. I think the only unexpected part of this whole arrangement was our customer communities wanted us to delay this hearing until after the holidays, and we did not want to do that. You know, it's easy for our customer communities that are charging their residents $3 and $4 for 1,000 gallons to want to take it slow, but I want to remind the Hammond Council, we're only charging our residents 44 cents for 1,000 gallons. So, if I were charging my residents six or seven times that, like our customer communities are, I wouldn't be in a big hurry either, but we are. And, right now, we're scheduled to be in court right after Christmas. And, I know the legal team is working furiously to make sure that they give Hammond, the Hammond Water Company, great representation. Trying to think anything else I need to address the council with. Is there any questions from the council?
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just curiosity. I noticed that we continue to have a lot of cars at Sportsplex. Are we, I understand that we have something in place where it's a parent area, but there's a lot of vehicles, which means there's a lot of people. Are we going to dial down some of that at this time, as we keep moving forward? Because the numbers are still where they are, they're still high. So, I really want to look out for that place and to make sure that we're not doing anything to help contaminate people or anything like that, but I have had several residents come to me regarding the Sportsplex and how packed it is and how many cars and things like that. Are we going to do anything?
There's no plan from me to do that, Councilwoman. I do want to remind the Councilwoman that our safety plan is being implemented rigorously by our staff. There is a mask mandate at all times required in there. Each child has to come in with just one parent, and adults cannot bring in guests. There's a lot of cars because it's a big place, Councilwoman. I agree that there's more than 25 people in there, but we've addressed this with the Lake County Health Department. Lake County Health Department's comfortable. I'd also like to remind the Councilwoman that high school sports are still being played around Northwest Indiana. Football season is, you know, just got done, and they're ramping up right now with basketball as we speak. I know that's not ideal. This is more my personal decision. I realize there's people probably that don't agree with my decision, but I think, right now, as long as the Lake County Health Department supports us, this is where we want to go. For the record, I did speak with staff of the park departments this morning, including staff at the Sportsplex, and everybody's very comfortable with what's going on. And I do want to remind the Councilwoman that nobody's forced to go participate at the Sportsplex either. You know, they're choosing to go there and play sports, and we do have rules when they're in the building, but I appreciate your concern, Councilwoman. You know, and some people probably think I'm making a mistake, and some people out there think that there's nothing going on, but I'm trying to balance safety and, you know, at the same time, you know, recreation, I think, is important as well. So, thank you for the question.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that. I just, like I said, I wanted to bring up what the residents are saying so that it's on the record.
I appreciate it.
Had this conversation. That it's not being pushed to the side, that everything is still constantly being thought about.
Yes, ma'am.
As we continue to move forward.
I appreciate it, Councilwoman. And I appreciate, I know how concerned you've always been about this, and I appreciate that about you. And, you know, I also feel, I'm very careful. I wear my mask at all times in public, you know. I am also trying to balance, you know, I feel strongly about the business community should be given a fighting chance to survive, and, you know, I'm trying to balance everything, Councilwoman, and I, believe me, I worry about the staff that's out there as well, you know. And I do agree, Councilwoman, there's a lot of cars in the parking lot. I appreciate you pointing it out, and I have no problem with you bringing it up, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Kowinski.
Mayor, has there, is there any update regarding the city of Joliet and water?
Thank you, Councilman. On Thursday, I appear before the Joliet City Council. I testify on behalf of our city's water department and our city, and the city of Hammond, right after Mayor Lightfoot testifies with Joliet. You know, we've talked about our proposal, and I want the council to keep in mind, our proposal, I think, is a great proposal because it gives Joliet independence from the city of Chicago, but our proposal does cost over $250 million more than them hooking up to the Chicago Water Department. So, there's two choices that faces Joliet's mayor and Joliet's council. Hook up to Chicago and be subject to the whims of the Chicago mayor, and I want to be very clear, I'm not talking about Mayor Lightfoot, okay? I'm talking about the Chicago mayor over the next 100 years. There could be a Chicago mayor 30 years from now that quadruples the water rate, and all Joliet ratepayers and everybody else that buys from Chicago water will be subject to that rate, you know, based off of what the mayor makes or mandates. If Joliet follows our advice and builds the pipeline and builds the filtration plant in Joliet, they spend more now, but they're independent of that mayor's position for the next 125 years. So, I think that ours is going to be harder to approve because it's more expensive, but ours gets Joliet where they need to be, which is independent. So, but that's on Thursday, Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any further questions for the mayor? Mayor, I just want to personally give a shout out to the IT staff for the way we've been able to do these council meetings and every other meeting in the city. We haven't missed a meeting all year, and thanks to the IT staff. I'm not there tonight just because I was exposed, I don't have it, but I'm being extra careful myself too, and thinking of others, and I encourage everybody to keep doing the same.
Thank you, Councilman.
If there's no further questions for the mayor? Nobody? Okay. Item, thank you, Mayor. Item number three, reading of the minutes. Councilman Spatelli.
Take a motion to accept the minutes from November 23rd, 2020, be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Spatelli, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Yes. Motion to approve claims dated 11/23/2020, and ending with claims dated 12/9 of 2020. Claim number 5579 through claim number 5974, in the amount of $10,646,469.2.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakels, seconded to approve the claims as written. Seconded by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Worple.
Yes. Let the record show, the claims are approved, nine in favor, zero opposed. And item number five, public hearings.
Item A. Ordinance 20-30 sponsored by Councilman Kowinski, and ordinance establishing economic improvement district and authorizing and approving other actions with respect thereto. Item B. Resolution 20R17. The petitioners are the Department of Planning and Development, and the sponsors are, is Councilman Spatelli. A declaratory resolution determining that a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, be designated as the Oxbow Landing Economic Revitalization Area Number Two, to which deductions from assessed valuation may be requested by an applicant to the common counsel of the city of Hammond, Indiana pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Does anybody wish to speak on either item?
Mr. President, this is Bob Berger.
Or Tony Berger.
Yeah. The very first paragraph of the ordinance is, whereas a petition has been filed, and I've looked, I've inquired, and apparently, no petition has actually been filed with the clerk or the council, and I don't see how we can adopt an ordinance that says something that's just not true.
Which item does this pertain to?
This is A.
Ordinance establishing economic development district and authorizing and approving other actions with respect thereto?
That's correct.
Mr. President, this is Kevin Smith, Corporation Counsel. Just, a large binder was presented to the clerk. What we'll do is, it's my understanding, this is just a public hearing, it's not being taken out of committee, so between now and when it does come out of committee, we'll make sure to check with the clerk to address Mr. Berger's concern regarding the petition.
Does that answer your question, Attorney Berger?
I think it may answer my question when I actually see the petition.
Okay.
Bob, I'll make sure that the folks that are here for the data center will get that over to you, or at least give you a call to discuss that with you.
Yeah, I think it should be circulated to the council, too.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, we believe it has been, Mr. President, but we will definitely address Mr. Berger's concern, and I'll, the data center folks are here, and they've been listening, and we'll be happy to address that as well.
So, I'm, Mayor, so I'm Tom Dockitch, I'm with the data center. We did file the petition, we filed, the ordinance, or the rule requires 14 copies plus an original. That was all presented to the clerk's office. I didn't bring it, but I can, I can make a copy available, or if you have an email address, we can, we can, we can basically get you a copy over if that's an issue.
Does anybody else wish to speak on either one of these items in public hearing?
Mr. President, we didn't, we didn't get the copies of the ordinance from the petitioner.
And hear them.
So, I can tell you what happened. The, when we filed it, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong here, when we filed it, the ordinance requires as a room that was, that was actually to be filed in, that room, I want to say it was 221 off the top of my head, but I could be wrong, that room was under, was under construction, so we went down to the clerk's office and filed it in the clerk's office downstairs.
We had a box of binders we sent to the council.
Okay. So, the box of binders.
Hey, guys, this is Mayor Tom. I mean, if we're not, we're just having the public hearing on this.
Yeah, that's what, this is just a public hearing, correct?
So, why don't we just have the public hearing, and then we'll fix whatever the problem is, and we'll get it ready before the next council meeting? Is that okay? So, that, I mean, we advertise this public hearing.
That's, this is a public hearing on both of these issues.
Right, and if there's a problem with, you know, with what's going on, I think we can rectify that before the next council meeting, right?
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak as far as the public hearing goes on either one of these issues?
This is Tom Dockitch, I'll give you a minute, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
This is, this is a request for an economic improvement district bond. It is not, the bond is not going to put a dime of the city's money at risk. The, the whole concept here is to not do that, is to tie up the second position in the, in the security, the taxes are the first, the senior lender is the second, but in there, in Indiana law, there's a, there's a little area in there that's, that's a little bit murky. So, in financing our project, which we're, we told you we'd do $40 million, we're going to do $129 million worth of development at the, at the site, and as, as the project has grown and expanded, we've gotten these more complicated ways to do this. I want to throw a couple things out there. The North District will do, or the North Hammond will do really well on this, on this project. First of all is, is that we're, we're in the process of refinancing a portion of the land, and that, that land is going to go out at $400,000 an acre. Now, that's a, as far as we can tell, that'll be the most, any tract of land is ever traded for in, in Hammond, and maybe, and it's very competitive with the rest of the, rest of the county. The second thing is that, as we expand, and we didn't anticipate, when I, when I talked to everybody about this, when we started this, we didn't anticipate that the expansion that NIPSCO is going to be required to do. So, the north, or the Wolf Lake Power Plant or Substation is going to eventually, very quickly, be expanded and made dramatically bigger than what it is now. This isn't newsworthy today because it's not going to happen today, but over the course of the next two years, we anticipate possibly a doubling of the size of, of the power that's going to be available to the people in North Hammond. Upon passage of this, of, when, when we take this up, hopefully, this, this gets passed, we will, when we, when we came to you at the first part, we had a ground lease that essentially took, that deferred a payment on $2.5 million worth of, worth of, worth of money on the land. We're, we're going to accelerate that. That money is due in nine and a half years. We'll be, we, under the prior way we were going to do this, the payment to the city of Hammond wouldn't happen for nine and a half million years, or nine and a half years, and the $2.5 million, the mayor and his staff have, have convinced us that retiring that would be good, so we'll be, within 90 days or so of the, of the creation of the district, we'll be, we'll be putting that, paying that off to the city. What, the bond, the, there is a bond district, that is, there is a district that's a part of this. There are three members of that, that we've asked to be a part of that district. They were, they will, they are all Hammond residents. I'm not pointing anybody to the, to that, to that bond grouping. The, whatever money comes into this, which will not be, be an obligation of the city, is going to be, will be controlled by, by members of the three people that live in Hammond. On a personal note, I'm, I'm so happy with the way this has gone. You guys have been fantastic to us. I would not, and I think the mayor and hopefully his staff would agree with this, I would never put you guys in a spot where I wanted to put a dime of your money at risk. That's not what I want to do. What I, what I'd like to do is to reverse, when we, when we needed a little bit of help from you guys, you guys were there to help us start, and we tried to be good neighbors through this, and what I'd like to do is to not, is to give you back some of that money, and to make it such that, as, and to get that money back to you quicker than what we were going to do before. We're really proud of, of Northwest Indiana, we're really proud of Hammond. We run around the country, you guys have most, met most of the guys in our group. Now, we've, we've got 22 people or something working on the project. We run around the country talking about Hammond, and what we're doing is, we're changing the way Chicago looks at it. Our motto is, the best data center isn't in Chicago, it's in, it's in Hammond, Indiana. So, I thank you for the time, and I'm available for questions if anybody has any.
Does anybody else wish to speak on these two issues? Does anybody else wish to speak on these two issues?
Yeah, this is Mayor McDermott. I just want to, hi, thanks, Mr. President, for letting me speak in regards to this issue. We're in daily discussions with the data center group in regards to the request for $30 million of EID money. This proposal's a lot like a TIF district, which, you know, if you think about a TIF district like, let's just say, Cabela's. We floated $20 million plus when we did the Cabela's district. We carry it on our books, and the property taxes that are generated in the Cabela's district pay off the bonds that were paid for it, so we carry that debt on our books, but city Hammond taxpayer money, city Hammond budgeted money doesn't go a penny towards the Cabela's district, so, you know, this is a similar type of proposal. If we want to be in the data center game, we gotta, we gotta be competitive with other municipalities that are willing to do whatever it takes to bring these types of developments to their city. We have amazing opportunity at the former State Line Generator. It was the dirtiest coal-fired power plant in the United States of America that was shut down. When it was shut down, we lost $100 million of assessed value in the city of Hammond, and this is the type of development that's going to bring it back all the way. As Mr. Dockitch indicated, the first phase of his project has turned out very well. We participated in that one to the tune of $8 million? $8 million. The state of Indiana also participated in that first phase to bring the first data center in the state of Indiana to Hammond. This next phase is $30 million of EIDSS money, which is a higher priority, which is important for investors. This will be carried on our books as though we're paying for it, but in fact, we're not paying for it. It's the assessment on the data center that pays for it. There will be investors that buy these bonds, it will not come from Hammond taxpayer money. Any remote possibility of liability we have, we're trying to address that right now. Councilman Kowinski, who sponsored the ordinance, is aware of what we're trying to do, we've been working real close with him. Obviously, this being in the first district, we felt it was most appropriate for Councilman Mark to sponsor this ordinance. I'm hoping we could iron out the last few issues we have so that we could bring this before the Hammond Council for a final vote. I appreciate Attorney Berger's objections, and obviously, we want Attorney Berger to be comfortable with this as well, so whatever Clerk Golick and Attorney Berger need of my staff, we're going to take care of it so that the Hammond Council is comfortable with what they're being asked to do.
Mr. President.
Clerk, or Clerk Golick?
Yes, Attorney Berger had called the office, Mayor, regarding the documents, and we had indicated to him at that time that we do not have them, that he ought to contact the attorney or the petitioner or someone else, and not this office, because we didn't have them at that time. I'm surprised Attorney Berger is bringing that up now, when he had the time and opportunity to do that a week ago. I'm just surprised at it, Mayor.
Okay. And, you know, I appreciate that, Clerk Golick, and, and if, you know, obviously, whatever my team could do to help bridge this gap, we're willing to do it, because we respect everybody. Everybody's got tough jobs, and City Hall is in complete disarray right now with all the grinding and all the painting, and we have workers, you know, tearing the place apart right now. So, whatever we need to do, my administration needs to do to make everybody satisfied, we're going to take care of it before the final vote, okay? So, but I'm real happy as mayor to host the first data center in our city, and I know the council helped make that a reality. This is the second data center, and of course, you know, the development group's coming to us for assistance, and I dare say, I've heard rumors of a possible, you know, another group that may be interested in this type of development, and I imagine if another group came forward and they were interested in doing something at that site, we may be here talking about it again. So, you know, I think as long as we're bringing these data centers to our city, we're going to be talking about incentives, and if you're not comfortable with that, obviously, you have the right to vote against this proposal. We're presenting it, we're trying to eliminate all the risk for Hammond, but keep in mind, for those debt hawks that are out there waiting for debt to go up, this will add to our books. We will carry this on our books. It's not going to be paid for by Hammond taxpayers, it's not going to be paid for by Hammond schools, it's not going to be paid for by the civil city, but it will be on our books. The assessment will pay for it, but it will be on our books, so it'll look as though we have more debt, when in fact, it's being paid by the assessment on the data center. But, anyway, anybody have any more questions for me in regards to the data center? And whatever we could do to make Clerk Golick and Attorney Berger satisfied, we'll take care of it, I promise. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this issue? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? All I'll add is I have a, received a message during this meeting that we do have a copy of what is being talked about at the council office. I just received that message from our secretary, so we do have a copy of what Mr. Berger's concerns were. That being said, is there any, is there any further discussion on the public hearings? Public hearing is now closed. Item number six, communications. Does anyone have any communications? Does anyone have any communications? Communications are now closed. Committee reports, item number seven.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I did want to report on the community and crime watch. There will be no meetings for the remainder of the year, either in person or virtual, but what I would like to do is give a couple of pointers that we would ordinarily give at some of our community and crime watch meetings. And, and one of those is, for you women, when you're out shopping, never leave your purse unattended. That's just an invitation for somebody to snatch it and, and run with it. Never leave any decorative candles lit and unattended. That's just a way for an accident to happen. Do not put any, and this goes towards recycling, too. Do not put a whole computer or TV box in the trash. Break the box down. A computer or TV box in the- or TV box in the trash is an invitation to a thief to break into your home, because they know you got something new for Christmas. So please be vigilant with that. And as always, please call 911 in case of an emergency. If something just does not seem right, 911 is the number. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tyler, or Councilwoman Vanez, or Councilwoman Spitali, you want to give a quick, brief update on the Capitol Improvements Committee?
Hold on, I'll grab my book.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander?
I'll do it under business. I thought my house trying to unmute my mic, and I couldn't get it done.
Uh, the COVID numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so let me look at the agenda. Where is it? If Councilwoman Tyler or Spitali want to chime in here, please feel free. I see under new business, we had discussed a funding allocation for the 2020 Community Crossings Design and Construction Engineering Contract to resurface 169th from Kennedy to Indianapolis and Sibley from Holman to Soul. There was also discussion on funding allocation for Summer Street Design Phase One from Columbia Avenue to Willis. And we did get, after the meeting, an email that we had gotten approval on a project. Hold on, I'm looking for that. I'm sorry to be so ill-prepared on this. Well, I don't know where it is right now. Do either of you other gentlemen have that information?
[inaudible]
Okay, I found it. That the Indiana Department of Transportation sent us a letter dated December 8th granting approval for the Community Crossings Match Grant Fund. So that came in after the meeting. There were a couple of residents that I encourage to come to the meetings, either via Zoom or in person, to address any questions that they have, and they will be addressed.
Thank you. And all I'll add to that is, I've been asked about the 173rd Park in front of Purdue. I did notice that they're starting to move the telephone poles. That was a Community Crossings grant awarded last year that got let out for bid late summer. And that project, I'm assuming, since the telephone poles are being moved, is beginning now, but that's a project that was approved in 20, I want to say, 18 or 19, for Community Crossing, which is a state grant.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other committee reports?
I'll just add to Councilwoman Vanez's excellent report, that we'll submit a copy of the minutes from our last two meetings to be included for the record for the city council as well.
Councilman Tyler, do you have a Zoom, is there a regular Zoom number for their meetings as of right now, that we could at least post on our website, or you can give out?
Yeah, we can share that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further community, or committee reports? Any committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Ordinances, third and final passage. I apologize to talk about being unprepared. I had planned to be in at the council, and I don't have my packet in front of me. Do we have any, I mean, my packet from last meeting? Do we have any ordinances coming out tonight?
President, Warpo, there are no ordinances for final passage tonight.
Thank you, and sorry for my, an organization there. Thank you. Item number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, Ordinance 2031, sponsored by Mayor McDermott. An ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the city of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1, 2021.
President? Councilman Spitali.
Can we go through first and second reading, refer to council as a whole? The meeting's set for December 28 at 5:15.
First and second reading, council as a whole, for 5:15 meeting on December 28.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item B, Ordinance 2032, sponsored by Councilman Rakos. An ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one light item to another within various city 2020 budgets.
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
Motion to me, read that first and second reading, 20-32.
Motion's been made, pass on first and second reading, for ordinance 20-32 by Councilman Rakos. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I believe, Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
This is, this is, Your Honor, it's basically, it's a cleanup ordinance in a sense, but it's a little bit different than cleanup ordinances we sometimes have. These are the results, individual offices, individual departments, that have saved money through our lease agreement with Leapardo. And, for instance, like the police capital outlays, save $450, and it's going to the rainy day fund, which pays for these lease payments on our, for what we got through Leapardo, on the energy savings.
Thank you.
There's several of them in here, and it's almost $2,415,000, which goes to pay for our lease payments.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those, motions been made for first and second reading, all those in favor, or pass on first and second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item C, Ordinance 20-33, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. An ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeeper's Tax Fund for economic development purposes in 2020.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Go through first and second reading. Let's see, refer to council as a whole. Also, a public hearing set for December 28, 2020, along with a meeting at 5:15 on December 28, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali to go for, or pass on first and second reading. Go to council as a whole at 5:15 on December 28, with a public hearing scheduled on December 28, 2020. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item D, Ordinance 20-34, sponsored by Councilman Spitali.
What are you doing?
An ordinance creating new funds, number 29238280 and 281, for Justice Assistance Grant Programs Funds, awarded to the city of Hammond Police Department.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Can I go through first and second reading, refer to council as a whole? The meeting's set up for 5:15 on December 28, 2020.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Spitali, seconded by Tyler. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I hope the ayes have it.
Item E, Ordinance 20-35, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. An ordinance creating a new fund, number 1504, for U.S. Department of Health and Human Services CARES Act Provider Relief Funds for the city of Hammond ambulance services during COVID-19.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of 2035, refer to council as a whole, with a meeting on December 28 at 5:15 PM.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander, to pass on first and second reading. Be placed in council as a whole with a hearing on 5:15, I'm sorry, at 5:15 on December 28. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, this creates a fund for some of the CARES Act money to reimburse for the ambulance services.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
President, Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, Resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 20-R-21, the petitioner is the Department of Planning, and the sponsor is Councilman Spitali. A resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming Resolution Number 20R-17, that designated and established a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area, to which deductions of assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Move for final passage of 20R-21?
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage of, final passage of 20R-21 by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, 20R-21 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, Resolution 20R-22, petitioner is the Department of Planning and Development, and the sponsor is Councilman Spitali. A resolution of the Hammond City Council granting Hammond Duo Hotels LLC an assessed valuation deduction for tax abatement for qualified tangible real property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Move for final passage of 20R-22?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali to, for final passage of 20R-22, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, 20R-23.
Is it Tyler campaign?
Correct, or is it 22?
22.
23.
22.
Not 20R-22 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. I'm sorry.
Item C, Resolution Number 20R-23, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. A resolution to provide for reimbursement of public health and public safety payroll costs with CARES Act funding.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of 20R-23?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez for final passage of 20R-23, seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, 20R-23 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item Number D, Resolution 20R-24, sponsored by Councilman Tyler. A resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, approving the execution of an amendment to lease by the Hammond Sanitary District in connection with the refunding of bonds issued for and on behalf of the district.
Mr. President?
Wait.
I'm sorry, Clerk Golick.
Sponsored by Councilman Tyler. Is there a motion to?
Mr. President, I make a motion for a final passage of 20R-24.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler for final passage of 20R-24, seconded by, I heard several voices, Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion, Mayor?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Vanez. Okay, Mr., Mayor.
Thank you. This is a, for the homeowners that may be wondering what's going on, you're going to see the sanitary district CEO, Mr. Wilgus, come up after I'm done, and talk about, you know, I'm not sure how many people are aware, but right now, the United States of America has historically low interest rates. And just like, if you bought your house five, six, seven years ago, and you, you know, have people approaching you about refinancing your house, and if you refinance your house now and lock in the low rates we have now, you could save hundreds of dollars on your monthly mortgage payment, and, you know, still not incur more debt. You just refinance the debt you have, and you save a bunch of money. We took a look at some of the bonds we have throughout the city, in the sanitary district, and there's a bond that Mr. Wilgus is going to come up and talk about when I get done here, that simply by refinancing a bond that they issued in the sanitary district a few years back... a few years back, he could save almost a million dollars a year by refinancing it. So, obviously, Marty being a good CEO, is approaching the City Council, asking for your support in refinancing that debt he has. I want to remind you and the Hammond residents that are watching this, it's just, just like a typical financing of your house, we're not bringing on more debt, we're just refinancing the debt Mr. Wilgus already has. And, in this case, it's going to save him, like I mentioned, almost a million dollars a year. In the next meeting, the city controller in the City of Hammond is going to be approaching the council with the refinancing of their infrastructure bond that we passed a few years back, which will save the City of Hammond a lot of money as well. So, over the next couple of weeks, you're going to see us approaching you with these refinancing, trying to refinance these bonds. This is the first of two. So, I did wanted to point that out for the homeowners to understand, this is just like if you refinancing your house. So, anyway, I want to cede to Mr. Wilgus so he can explain in particular what he's asking the council to approve.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Wilgus.
City Council, Mr. President, it's exactly what the mayor said as we had talked about in executive session. We're going to take the opportunity as the Sanitary District Building Corporation, that's what this bond is, that the council, as I had indicated several years ago, when I came to the council, that the district needed to have some cash flow, and that was the entity that we used to get about $12 million. As of today, by refinancing that debt, under the same term, not adding any more years to that bond, we're not taking any money out, we're going to save close to the $900 to $1 million that the mayor had talked about. And, once again, I'm happy that the Hammond Council had helped us before, and I'm hoping to get your blessing on the refinancing again today. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Wilgus, just for the record, we didn't have an executive session. I don't want no one freaking out. It was actually during caucus. You had mentioned that we discussed this in executive session. It was just during caucus, just for the record. Is there any other discussion?
Who's mode is that?
Me. That must be a blessing from above.
What happened? Is there any other discussion? 20R-24, Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
$150 in cash.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, 20R-24 passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, new and unfinished business.
Item A, Reference Number 20-36, a petition of the 18th Street Distillery LLC for variance use of use from zoning ordinance to allow a beer fermentarium in a C3 central business district located at 474, 478, and 496 Fayette Street within the City of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of petition number 20-36.
Second.
Motion's been made for approval of 20-36 by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, 20-36 is approved, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
President?
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Councilwoman Janet Vanez to the HASS School Board, please.
Motion's been made to reappoint Councilwoman Vanez to the HASS School Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council, motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Kalwinski. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
I just would like to say that I've served on the HASS School Board for at least the past six years. I can't remember exactly, but it is definitely an honor and a pleasure to serve on that board and to observe the outstanding students at that school and to brag on their graduation rate every year. It is just a pleasure to see our Hammond kids excel. So, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President?
Was that the mayor?
Thank you, Marty Wilgus.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marty.
I just wanted to add to that. I also sit on the HASS Board, and it's been a pleasure to serve with Councilwoman Vanez. She has added so much to the board. I've been on the board, I think, three or four years now, and she has done a wonderful job. It's a pleasure to sit next to her in the meetings and to do the great things that we do as a board for all of those students at that great school. And, I just wanted to add that your reappointment of her to that board is a real plus for the City Council.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Marty.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the motion, let the record show, the motion to reappoint Janet Vanez, or Councilwoman Vanez to the HASS School Board passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander.
I'm sorry, I didn't do this in new unfinished business, I mean, in communications. But, our updated COVID numbers from our last meeting were 46320. We have an additional 150 cases. For 46327, we have an additional 123 cases. For 46323, we have an additional 282 cases. For 46324, we have an additional 250 cases. For 46394, we have an additional 129, taking it to 934. It's a drop from the last meeting, which is great, but not a good drop for me. So, I just want to continue to encourage our resident, sorry for the way I talk, you just had surgery. I just want to continue to encourage our residents to stay masked up, continue to wash their hands, stay socially distanced, as we continue to battle COVID-19 together.
Thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
I, yes, I would like to wish a very happy birthday to our cameraman Jake Jacobs and our city clerk, Bob Golick. Happy birthday, gentlemen.
Happy birthday, guys.
Happy birthday, you young men.
Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I, I would like to request that everyone remember the reason for the season. This is a season of giving. And, to reiterate what Councilwoman Alexander said, in the spirit of giving, please, give, give safety to your neighbors. Give safety to the people who surround you. And, wear a mask. Please continue to social distance and wash your hands. Please take all the precautions that you can, so we can all be around next year to celebrate this wonderful season of giving and family and friends next year. Thank you. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business? I just want to take the time to echo what you guys have said and wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. I know this isn't the last meeting of the year. We have one more meeting before 2021 can be put in the books, but I just, this has been a very tough year, and this time last year, if you would have said, hey, next year you guys are going to be doing your meetings on Zoom, I would have said, what Zoom? And, I am proud of the fact, the way the council and the city have worked together to work through these hard times as far as gaming money and, and everything that's gone this year. And, I, I'm just want to, you know, tell everybody Merry Christmas, and I'm very much proud to be a member of this council. And, hopefully, 2021 will be a lot better, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
David, can I, can I please address the council for just one minute, one brief moment?
Yes, yes. Under your authority. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to thank every council member and the City of Hammond and Mayor McDermott and Africa and Ann and Phil and everybody that's worked with me over the years. And, I love the City of Hammond, and I love what you guys are doing. And, I am very grateful to be a part of such a great city. And, I look forward to building another beautiful hotel there, and we create some more revenue and beautify our city. And, I look forward to working with you guys in the future. And, I sincerely thank you all for being great partners to Ascend Hospitality. Thank you again. And, Merry Christmas and happy holidays. And, peace and good health to you and all of your family members. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your name for the record too, please? I guess we'll put that on this public expression.
Yes, Nash Patel with Ascend Hospitality.
Thank you. Thank you, Nash. Is there any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression.
Mr. President Warple?
Yes, sir?
We have no one who's signed up for public expression.
Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak? I can't see, so somebody would have to notify me of it.
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a second? Most of all, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Bye-bye.